I am Ashley Butler and I mostly teach.
It's Day, November 12th at 6:00 PM and this is the regular monthly business meeting of the McDowell County Board of Education and the meeting is now in order. Our first item this evening is to approve the agenda and members you have that in front of you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make it. Go ahead, go ahead.
Some of.
All right, Mr. Mrs. Mumal makes the motion and Mr. Suddles offers the second. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, then all in favor, right hand and the motion carries unanimously. You know, yesterday we, as a country, celebrated the service of those who defend and protect us and perhaps this evening, as we take a moment to pause and sit together silently, we could remember again those folks and also those folks that serve us each day. Could we do that? Thank you. We'll take a moment then to be together in silence. Next, our NJROTC unit will present our colors this evening and are there veterans in the audience this evening?
Quite a few.
Quite a few?
Yeah.
Would you stand, please? I hate to ask you veterans and put you on the spot, but after our unit posts the colors, would you fellows lead us in our pledge this evening? All of you, thank you. Let's stand.
Please, head, color.
Salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three, colors. Ready, cut, post the colors. High face. Port, colors. Hope, hurry, march. Colors. Back to you all.
Thank you, Johnny.
Item five on the agenda this evening is superintendent remarks and Dr. Tracy Gritt, our outstanding superintendent here, we're ready to hear what you have on your mind.
All right. Well, good evening, folks, ladies and gentlemen of the board. A couple of things for you this evening. We've got a packed agenda tonight, full of recognitions and stories of success, but before we get into that, let's take a moment and talk about something. You already spoke a little bit about it today, Mr. English. November in the U.S. is a special month. It's a month in which we vote for our elected officials and following the election, we celebrate the men and women of our armed services. Take a moment and reflect on the order of these events. Recognizing our members of service following our elections, something we can all stand behind. Following an election, some folks are excited about the outcome while others are not. However, in most beautiful things, or one of the most beautiful things about that is the following that is the Veterans Day holiday and we can all stand behind that and recognize the sacrifices of those who served and those who served and fought for our right to vote in a free nation. What a privilege it is that we have in this country. I know Mr. English has already asked you, but we certainly appreciate you, those members of the service that were here with us tonight. Thank you for your services and sacrifice for our great nation. Thank you for keeping our democracy safe and allowing us to participate in meetings where our voices are heard. And again, I was going to have them stand, Mr. English, but you beat me to it, so good job. Good job. Yes, sir. We appreciate you. Just as we stand behind our veterans, we must stand with and behind our schools to ensure that our children are cared for and that so many of our traditions and hard work and dedication are passed down through the generations. And folks, I'm proud to say that our recognitions tonight indicate the excellent work occurring in McDowell County and within our schools. We will honor McDowell County Early College for earning a national blue ribbon this evening. This is one of only five schools in the state of North Carolina to receive this award this year. We will honor William Keller, a graduate of McDowell High School who is now serving as the McDowell County Emergency Services Director. We will honor Jay English, another McDowell High School graduate who received a national attention when he completed the 2024 FFA American Degree. And finally, we will recognize four of our McDowell County Board members for serving our students. Typically, the superintendent's remarks are to recap the last month, but I don't think we have time to do that this meeting. To say that we've been busy is an understatement. To hit the high points, I'll utilize some strategies that I've learned in brevity. Over the last month, we brought our students back to school, combined two schools, ordered mobile units, restored power and water, began seeding grass at the old fort, held a virtual day for sites used as polling center, transformed or transitioned from fall to winter sports, learned how to navigate FEMA, met with the executives from the Carolina Panthers, worked closely with our legislators, met our payroll with staff raises and athletic supplement increases, flew up to DC and met with the U.S. Secretary of Education while receiving a blue ribbon for outstanding schools. But none of that is as important as the work that our teachers and staff do every single day to meet the individual needs of each child. The work in the classroom is what brings notoriety. The hard work in the classroom is behind our great community leaders who attend many of our schools. Behind each of us in a leadership role, many teachers had a hand in helping us achieve our goals. Let's remember our teachers tonight as these recognitions are being handed out. And folks, the one thing I can say about 2024 is that it'll be a year we all remember and we still have 50 days remaining to showcase more success and I'm proud of the work that this team has done and where we are as a school district. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Gritt, item six is the special recognitions that you referenced there. Would you lead us on?
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to start tonight with our Early College and Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson started at the Early College 19 years ago. We just had the pleasure of going up to DC this past week and receiving prestigious honor and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that award and what it means. It's a first for McDowell County and there's a lot of work that went into it, a lot of work that went into it long before I came to McDowell County and a lot of people to say thank you to. But what it means to be a blue ribbon school. The program was founded in 1982 by Terrell H. Bell, the second U.S. Secretary of Education, best known for commissioning a nation at risk, the imperative for educational reform. Bell began the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program to highlight schools that modeled the kind of excellence and sound practice that all American schools should strive for and reach. The program has bestowed more than 10,000 coveted awards to over 9,700 schools across the country since the program's inception, with some schools receiving multiple awards. This year, 356 public and 40 private schools were designated National Blue Ribbon Schools. National Blue Ribbon Schools have always represented the full diversity of the American education. They're elementary, middle, and high schools, many permeations thereof. They're public, non-public, large and small, urban, rural, suburban, traditional, and innovative. They're mission-focused and student-centered systems of powerful teaching and learning. They are great American schools. Congratulations to Ms. Robinson and the McDowell Early College for earning the McDowell County, or for earning the first McDowell County Blue Ribbon.
She can't carry this in. I didn't give this to you. This is one of the Education Secretary gave, but we did want to have it here for you guys to see tonight. It's beautiful. And that'll hang in there.
May I have a six-page speech I'm going to read here?
Not really. I would like to say thank you, Dr. Gritt, and thank you, Board. It has definitely been a ride for the last 19 years. We've worked really hard to be where we're at and I know you guys will know that I always say this, it's about relationships. Relationships are key to our success at McDowell Early College. It's always been and remains at the center of everything that we do. And then I'm going to skip through a bunch of this other stuff because he's already told you, out of, there's 719 public high schools in North Carolina, so I think that says a lot, that makes it relative, that we were chosen for this award. We were chosen as an exemplary school of growth and meaning that there's been several years of high growth and that's, I thought, it was because we have a new superintendent and he, it's so funny, when we were in Washington, he said, "So, what did you have to do for this?" And I said, "Well, I thought you knew somebody in Raleigh and had told them, you know, about our school and, you know, that they had looked at," but neither of us. They actually look at the growth of schools in North Carolina and that's how we were chosen because we've had like five, you know, years of exceeding growth, high growth. But I wanted to share just one paragraph from, we spent about 40 hours on what we had to submit and this was after we had been selected but not guaranteed, I guess, the award. And this was the final paragraph in one of the sections that they asked us to write about. I want to share, well, this is it. "The power of intentional connections created among our students, their families, and our staff is demonstrated by the success of our students. Students stay connected to MEC even after graduation. They consistently donate funds to support field trips and students in need. They return to share their experiences, their career paths, and how MEC prepared them for their future. They return to play in an alumni basketball game even after being gone more than 14 years." We had some kids come back, no, they're not kids now, they're adults, "because they want to support the school that supported them as teenagers. They return to mourn the death of a classmate or a teacher and, most importantly, to support each other and the family that they created that is MEC. Being selected as the National Blue Ribbon School is a testament to the dedication of each student, parent, and staff member who has believed and still believes in the power of each other." So, thank you.
I will say, we traveled up to DC. We got back on Fri-, or on Saturday and Ms. Robinson and I, she asked if I had a key to the bus garage. I said, "I do." And we took the car over there and we looked at each other as we locked the award and the keys in the car. So, I was like, "Well, I hope nobody messes with it this weekend, but we can see we made it." So, it was a really, really great trip. It was a once-in-a-lifetime trip and honestly, it's one of those moments that it was just great to be part of something like that. Really nice. All right. Well, next up, let me make sure I've got everything in order. This is for outstanding dedication and service for the safety and students' families during Hurricane Helene in 2024. And that work is still ongoing, but I want to talk to you about my friend, William Keller. For those of you who don't know Mr. Keller, it's because you hadn't been paying attention. Mr. Keller has been very active in our community, keeping a lot of folks safe. Mr. Keller and his team ordered supplies in preparation for Hurricane Helene on Tuesday and Wednesday before the storm. A lot of folks may not know that. Ordering evacuations and making split-second, calculated decisions, keeping many people safe during and after the storm. Just this week, I had the opportunity to meet the U.S. Secretary of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, in DC to discuss how we opened our schools in the wake of the hurricane. The first thing that I said to him was that Mr. Keller's leadership saved lives and got us to the point where we could open schools. We spent the next 20 minutes discussing how we did this in McDowell County and the importance of such critical players working together. I've said this to the board before. "We are blessed in McDowell to have a team willing to lay aside differences and do what is right for the community and, most importantly, students. We are so fortunate that we didn't lose any students or staff in this storm and we are grateful for William Keller and his services in keeping us safe. William, on behalf of McDowell County Schools, we want to thank you for your contributions."
Dr. Gritt, if I may, I want to share something. William, don't you dare leave. Before you speak too, so everybody can look at this, but William and my brother are the same age and I think you may remember this, about 10 or 12 years old, he came over to spend the night with us one night and my dad decided he wanted to take us catfishing, if you remember this. And my dad said, William and David, my brothers, said, "Whatever you do, do not let these catfish pull the rod in the water. They're 40-pounders." So, he didn't tell them how to get them in, but I can remember sitting there with my dad and the rod tip of the rod starts going down, going down, then all of a sudden it goes. And I see William grab the rod, not reel the rod, but run through the woods with the rod, dragging the catfish up on the bank. And he took the directions and ran with it and when I started hearing the great things about what you did, truly in the lives you saved and stuff, I almost felt like you were reeling them in and pulling people into safety, but you see glimpses of young people that are going to make great future leaders and that's exactly what you are and I appreciate you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, thanks, Dr. Gritt, for the recognition and this, I accept this on behalf of our entire team, the volunteers, everybody who has showed up during the storm. We have operated for many, many years under the concept of one team, one mission. Doesn't matter who you are, what background you come from, when someone's lives, lives or when lives are on the line, none of that stuff matters and that's the way we've always operated. Our department using a whole-of-community approach and that whole-of-community approach takes key people from all sectors of government, nonprofits, faith-based. Literally every sector was recognized or represented in our emergency op center prior to, during, and even after the storm. But what I want folks in this room to understand is the staff of McDowell County Schools, the volunteers, showed up when McDowell County Emergency Op Center needed you the most. Your superintendent crawled off of a fuel tender or a fuel truck. Principals operated our warehouse and if I start naming names, I'm going to forget all kinds of people. The IT department came in and assisted the emergency op center. It didn't matter what color your shirt was, what agency you worked for, everybody had that can-do spirit. And I don't know that I've ever seen that as transparent as it was prior to, during, and after Helene. What occurred to McDowell County was absolutely remarkable and it took every single person, some that have never even walked into our EOC, but people showed up. And just to give you a snapshot, I won't take much of your time. In this county, prior to Helene, we had hoisted one person by helicopter in the history of this county's emergency operations center. After Helene struck, we hoisted up 100 people plus, and I'm not sure how many pets were on those baskets being raised to safety. 200 plus by boat and by ground rescue teams. That's over 300 people whose lives were in jeopardy that everybody who showed up, no matter what you did, you were a piece of the puzzle and your piece is, my piece is no bigger than your piece, but it takes all of the pieces to make the puzzle work. And as we continue on recovery, recovery is going to be long, there's going to be valleys, but I have no doubt this community spirit, if we continue that spirit, we can meet all of the challenges head-on. And I can't thank you enough for the leadership, Dr. Gritt, and all of the folks who showed up to assist. They were by our side, day in and day out. In the wee hours of the morning, they stuck it out with us and I'll forever be grateful for that because as a team and as a county, there were lives saved and I'm eternally grateful for that and I accept this on behalf of all of our team members. So, thank you very much.
It is a privilege to recognize a familiar face at our board member, at our board meetings and a remarkable achiever in agriculture education. Recently, Mr. Jay English was awarded the prestigious National FFA American Degree on October the 26th in Indianapolis, Indiana, marking a high honor in agriculture leadership. To earn this degree, students must meet the following criteria. Achieve either a $10,000 income with $7,500 invested productively or earn and invest $2,000 while completing 2,250 hours of work outside of class. Hold a state FFA degree and have graduated high school at least 12 months before the national convention. Complete at least three years of secondary agriculture education or 360 hours of agriculture instruction. Maintain detailed records of an SAE program that demonstrates advanced planning, managerial, and financial skills. And exhibit leadership, maintain a GPA of A-C or better, and complete at least 50 hours of community service across all three activities. Mr. English dedicated all four years of his high school career to our McDowell High FFA Program. He served as vice president and co-president. Additionally, he served as the chaplain of our Western Region FFA Officer Team. His achievements reflect his commitment and excellence and we are happy to celebrate this milestone with him. So, Mr. Jay English.
He's a pretty good fence post driver, too.
Tonight, we're going to recognize four board members for their dedication and service to McDowell County students and staff. We're grateful for their service over the years. Ms. Beth Silver, if you will come up, please, serving from 2020 through 2024, one four-year term as a board member following a 30-year teaching career. Thank you to Ms. Silver. Ms. Silver, I'm just going to kind of line you guys up there. Ms. Michelle Poupoe, serving from 2020 to 2024, one four-year term as a board member and the vice chair for the 2023-2024 school year. Thank you, Ms. Poupoe. Ms. Amy Mumal, serving from 2012 to 2024, three four-year terms for 12 years as a board member, serving as the vice chair in 2022 and 2023. Thank you, Ms. Mumal. Chairman Terry English, serving from 1996 to 2024, has seven four-year terms as a board member over the last 28 years with numerous stints in the chair and vice chair positions. Folks, if we only met once a month, that's 336 meetings, Mr. English, who's counting? And countless hours of work behind the scenes to help us advance our school district. If you walk around the school, you will see Mr. English's name on several of the schools as he was part of the Board for renovations and new constructions, most recently served as the chair in 2023 School Board here and North Carolina School Boards Association, Member of the Board of Directors. We appreciate you, Mr. English.
Before I speak about my time on the board, there are two people here that have ridden every moment of this emotional roller coaster with me. They were here when I was sworn in in 2019, but because of COVID restrictions, they were shuffled in and out without even an introduction. Lamar and Anna, your support to me is immense and wavering and I am so thankful. Lamar and Anna, your support to me is immense and wavering, and I am so thankful that you're my tribe. And I want to thank both of you for everything. Now, I began this journey with McDowell County Schools in 1987. I knew then that God had called me to the mission field of McDowell County Schools. He continued to bless me in that position as a classroom teacher for the next 30 years. After retiring in 2017, and after much prayer, I felt that God was calling me to run for the McDowell County School Board in 2019, and I was elected in 2019 by 13,000 votes. That same God that led me to those two decisions to run again this year on the same platform that I had ran for four years ago. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that the outcome of this election is not a reflection of the role that I played as a school board member, but it is a reflection of the fact that I chose to remain an unaffiliated candidate. The person that I was portrayed to be over the last two and a half years is not who I am, who I have ever been. And sooner rather than later, I will share the truth about all the things that were said. But for today, in the words of the great philosopher, Dr. Seuss, those who mind don't matter and those who matter don't mind. I have been blessed to have been able to invest in the lives of over 500 students and their families during my first year at West Marion Elementary School and the 29 years that I spent at Glenwood Elementary. As those students are now adults and are parents themselves, many of them still stay in contact with me. Their support and their words of encouragement is something that no one will ever be able to take away from me. There's a quote that says, "A hundred years from now, it will not matter what my bank account says, what sort of house I live in, or the kind of car I drove, but the world may be different because I was important in the life of a child." While my personal opinions and beliefs drive the daily decisions of how I live my life, I know that I have worked closely with and advocated for families that worship differently, look differently, and love differently than me. And in advocating for equity and equality for them, I hope that they were able to see Jesus in me. Dr. Grit, I want to express to you my sincerest thanks for the time that I've been able to serve with you. Sir, I've worked for several superintendents during my time with McDowell County Schools, and I want you to know that I would put you at the top of the list. McDowell County Schools is in good hands with you, and you will always have my support. To my fellow board members, it's been quite the journey that we've been on. They say every person you meet teaches you a lesson, and it's up to you to figure out whether it's a good one or not. But you'll learn from every lesson, and I want you to know I wouldn't change a thing about the last four years, even knowing what the outcome was last Tuesday. I wouldn't change a thing. I'm done. To the staff of McDowell County Schools, as Glinda the Good Witch told Dorothy, "You have the power within you. Advocate for yourselves, speak up for yourselves, and don't let anyone tell you that you're not the experts in your classroom. You have the best interest of the children in your care and for anyone, whether it is a board member, a politician, or even a pastor, to imply that you do not have their interest in mind is an absolute insult to your profession, our profession." Finally, to our students, you are all worthy to be loved. You are valued, and you deserve a fair and equitable education. Don't let anyone make you feel that you're not worthy and that you're never enough. Thank you.
Do you mind?
Would you care to?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you. Just a quick couple people or a few people that I'd like to just take a moment and thank. About 12 years ago, I signed up to do this. And I remember I was on a field trip with one of my children, and I went up to their teacher at the time, a fourth grade teacher, and told her how nervous I was to do this and that I really just hoped I could do a good job and didn't really know what I was getting myself into. And she said to me, "Amy, if you just keep every decision child-centered, it'll turn out okay." Miss Ward, thank you for that advice because I have, I have kept that at my heart the entire time, and I appreciate that. I love you, too. First and foremost, I would love to thank my family. I think all of us that are up here kind of know the sacrifices that our families make. To my children, they have been supportive. They've listened, they've been understanding, they've understood when I've missed games and performances and all that good stuff, and I will forever be indebted to that. To my husband, who has been the most supportive and understanding spouse on the face of this earth. He has encouraged me, he has listened, and he's made sacrifices. We've even left on vacations on Tuesdays so I could be at a board meeting on a Monday. So, I will forever be appreciative, and I wish everybody could be as lucky as to have a spouse like that by their side. I would like to thank the executive team, past and present, and especially technology for putting up with me. We know the stories, right? You all have such a knowledge of, of public education, and you have dedicated your lives to sharing that with all of us and that knowledge that you've shared with us along the way so that we would understand. I can't tell you how many times I've said, "Well, as a dietitian, I don't quite understand this." And you guys have held our hands and guided us and helped us so much, and I will forever be grateful for that and your time and your passion for educating us along with the rest of the students. I would like to thank the teachers, the staff, and the principals of McDowell County Schools. There is no one in this system that has a better understanding for the, and compassion for the students in this county. You truly love these children, and you serve them with such big hearts. My eyes have been opened because of you. You have shared the needs and the situations of these students so that we truly have an understanding of the children that we serve, and I thank you for that. Every, every month, our Teacher of the Year, and we appreciate you, Mr. Hill, this year, but every year we have, or every month, we have a great example of what's going on in our schools, and they have opened our eyes, and I will forever be appreciative for that. That's such a vital role that you all play on this board, and I appreciate that. Past and present superintendents, wow, I am amazed at your time, your effort, your knowledge, your passion, your love for these students and for the education of McDowell County. So, I appreciate that, and I consider you not only someone that I work alongside, but a friend, and I hope that our paths continue to cross a lot in the, in the time to come. I can't go without saying that there have been two really special ladies that have served me in a big way since I've been on that board. Ms. Charlie, you have been like a mother to me. When I first got on here, I was the only woman at the time when I stepped on the board, and you really helped me out, and I truly appreciate that, and I will forever love you, and I will consider you one of my dearest friends. And all of us also know Ms. Becky has been a lifesaver. She is someone that you can talk to, she will keep your confidence. She loves to joke around with you, she has everything ready for you. For those of you coming on to the board, you have no idea what a gift she is to you. She will be an absolute gift to you. But more importantly, I consider you one of my dearest friends, and I can't wait to be off the board so we can just go hang out and have lots of fun. And lastly, I want to thank the students of McDowell County Schools. I have been on so many field trips, classroom visits, programs, school time, playing out on the playground with first graders. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve you, and that's, that's what we're here for at the students of McDowell County. So, thank you all so much. It's been a great 12 years. Thank you.
Well, you'd think that if anyone was gonna, it was gonna probably be me, but you know, interestingly, I've had eight months to think about this, and I just, all I have to say is thank you for trusting me for these four years. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve. So, thank you.
Well, since all the other outgoing members have spoken, I guess I should as well. It's really hard to believe how fast a lifetime passes. And you don't realize the brevity of time until your time has come. And so, tonight marks my final meeting as a member of the Board of Education. For these past 28 years, golly, 28 years, two whole generations have gone through McDowell County Schools from kindergarten to graduation. I'm grateful and honored at the same time that folks, not only in my community, but across the county, would trust me to represent their interest in our local public education system. And I feel like that over the years, although we've had rough spots in the road, that we've come a long way as a board, as a community, as a school system. And I feel deep in my heart that this board particularly has left McDowell County Schools, will leave McDowell County Schools in good hands for the incoming board. If I had one piece of advice to give an incoming board, it would be the same advice I gave to our superintendent just a year and a half ago. There's always enough time to make a good decision. Not everything has to happen in a hurry. Again, I thank you for your trust and your confidence in me. I am convinced that in some capacity, I will still be able to serve not only my community, but my county and you folks as well. You folks have become second family to me. Gosh, we've had Christmas get-togethers and birthday parties and receptions, and the list just goes on and on. But that's what makes a life worth living, is a life of service. And so, I leave you with just those words and those thoughts. And for you folks coming on, you will come to appreciate the opportunity to meet, work alongside of, and form those relationships with folks that are not in your current circle. It's been quite the privilege for me, and so, I thank each of you for these 28 years, and I look forward to another 28 years in some capacity. There's, there's always hope. So, thank you all. If I could, right quick, before we move on along, I'm not sure people, as we were recognizing Mr. Keller, our principal at the Early College, our recent graduate who earned a national award, and other folks. I'm not sure that everybody in the general community understands what a real treasure we have here. And that was probably the best day's work that this board did was selecting Dr. Tracy Grit as our superintendent. He's managed to put the right people in the right places, and he's managed through his determination and spirit of goodwill, he's managed to make those connections that can really help McDowell County Schools prosper. You heard him say that as they were being awarded the Blue Ribbon Schools Award in Washington, DC, that he had a chance to speak with the U.S. Secretary of Education. But what he didn't tell you is that the U.S. Secretary of Education sought him out to ask his opinion. And so, that's kind of the caliber of superintendent and administrative staff that we have here. And Dr. Grit, I hope you feel that we've left things in a good spot for you and your new board coming on, and I hope you folks will continue to prosper for our staff and our students, and more importantly, for our community. We're all citizens in our community. So, thank you all, and we'll move on along. How about that? Time waits for no man. You're quite welcome, sir. Item, let me put my glasses on. That's one thing that happens over 28 years, you have to get spectacles. Item seven, Dr. Greg Kerr from McDowell Early College is here, and he's going to enlighten us on the North Carolina Global Program.
Yes, on a lighter note. So, Dr. Grit asked me to give a report on a faculty development experience I had this last summer. I was fortunate enough to be selected by the county to represent them at the Go Global NC International Faculty Development Trip to South Korea. And so, we spent 35 teachers from across North Carolina, 11 days in South Korea, and we learned about the culture, about the education system, and we had an opportunity to learn about how they do STEM education. So, I'm a biology teacher at the Early College, and so, that STEM education was part of what I wanted to go and experience. But I also wanted to be a part of learning about the Korean culture because I have students who are really into K-pop music and K-dramas, and so, I thought a better way to connect, which is, as you heard, an important part of the success of McDowell Early College, I wanted to connect better with them. So, what better way than immersing myself in that South Korean culture? So, we had a lot of meetings ahead of time, some Zoom meetings and some all-day in-person orientation in Raleigh, read a book, heard lectures from Korean experts, and then traveled there. And during our time there, we had opportunity to go to multiple schools and learn about their education system. They have over 1,000 years of, of teacher worship there. It's not quite worship right now, but teaching is very respected. And I asked one of the principals of the schools that we visited, "Do you have any trouble finding teachers?" And she said, "In Korea, teaching is a prestigious profession and very well-paid." And so, they have no trouble with that. The education there is great, the science education is, is top-notch. They always do great in standardized tests in math and science. And besides the education part, the cultural immersion included Korean, Korean cooking lessons, K-pop dance lessons, which I understand there, we don't have enough time for me to show that right now. We went on a hike to the tallest mountain near Seoul, South Korea. We went to the demilitarized zone between North and South Korea, which was an otherworldly experience because we were there the day that Putin came to visit North Korea. And so, our phones were going off with alerts about the missile launches and things like that that they were experiencing. So, besides connecting with students that like K-dramas and K-pop, I also wanted to connect my science class with what, what we learned there. And so, I took an optional kimchi-making class. So, kimchi is a fermented cabbage or other vegetables, and I was looking for an opportunity to teach fermentation to my high school biology class. And I thought, instead of making a fermented beverage, making fermented food would be better. And so, in the next couple of weeks, my class will be making kimchi as we talk about the whole process of fermentation from a more biochemical kind of standpoint, so making it a little bit real. But it was an amazing experience, and I want to thank the schools for sending me and just encourage any teachers that are out there to participate. Every year, Go Global NC takes teachers to different countries, and this year was South Korea. So, thank you.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure. Dr. Kerr?
Dr. Kerr, can I ask a question? Do you, um, thank you. Is, is the South Korean education a free educational program or is it a paid educational? Like, does every child get a free education in South Korea?
So, free education is available.
It's available.
Many of the more competitive families also send them to something called a cram school, which is school after school. And they might go till ten o'clock at night, um, trying to get the best scores, get into the best colleges.
Got it. Okay. All right. So there is a free option?
Yes.
Most families, though, who can afford it, are taking advantage of a...
Of the additional education right.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Kerr? Kerr, I'm sorry. Let us know how the kimchi turns out.
There is kombucha, right? That's, yes. And also, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we always ate sauerkraut at our house. All right, we'll move along. Item eight, unfinished business, um, operations and facilities update. And Dr. Gritt, you have some information for the board?
Yes, sir. All right, folks, I've got some updates for you here. Uh, we'll start with an update on what's going on at Old Fort and, uh, work our way to what's going on at PG in the near future. So, Garrett, if you can, just click on that first photo there. What I wanted to show you guys here was, in Old Fort, one of the things that we've been dealing with, and if anybody who's been in Old Fort lately, they certainly know, there's been a lot of dust. So Garvin and his team have been working really hard, um, at getting the grass on there. Um, and for, for those of you who remember what that looked like, that's, that's, that's a lot. That was, you know, feet, not inches, feet of mud there. All that's been cleared off so far. The exterior work, folks, that is on us. That's one of those that we're still waiting to see what the insurance will cover, what FEMA would cover, but right now, that is the part where we're taking care of some of that. You almost have to, too, because part of it, you don't want to track it back in the building. So Garvin Trinks and his team have been incredibly proactive there. Uh, next picture, please, Garrett. Here you can see the front of the school, and you can still see some of that, uh, mud is up against the sidewalk. But it's, it's, uh, you know, getting, getting the building to start to look like it should, like a school should, is what we're working on there. The next photo, and just another shot of that. I did take a picture of that tree. Garvin wanted me to remind everybody, everybody that those, those cedars do leave their, do, do leave, lose their nettles during the winter, so there's a good chance that they'll be bare, but they will come back. He reassured me of that. All right, now this shot, the reason I put this in here, for those of you who have been following our work, um, remember this area was the area hallway where all the HVAC units were sitting in the hallway. They're back in. That doesn't mean they're working, but, but they're back in their place. Uh, we're slowly beginning to get those up and running. Uh, the goal right now is to be able to pull a moisture content, um, on the building sometime around Thanksgiving. So that's going to give our HVAC guys a little bit more time to continue to work in that, in that building. I will tell you that, um, some of the motherboards, that was the issue that we were having, some of them on the HVAC units are coming on, which is great. That means we can go ahead and get them started. The others, we know, were having to order those, um, motherboards. So the more of them that we can get to come on, um, even if they're, even if they are semi-operational, it's still better. We know a new one will be coming in its place. Those will all be covered under the insurance. But our goal is to really, really put some heat into that building. So, I mean, we need it to be like a, like a sweat lodge, if you will. So, the next picture, Garrett. Here's a picture of that, uh, motherboard, and, and for those of you who remember, the mud was, uh, you know, roughly, uh, six to eight inches deep. So the motherboard there on the bottom of that machine, um, and that is an HVAC air handling, uh, it, the, the mud was about six to eight inches. So most, all of them did take, uh, did take water for sure. Uh, this is a picture in the back. Again, you can see how much, uh, mud has been cleared out and, and debris removed. Some of those, uh, HVAC mechanical systems did fire up. I know he's got the, um, multipurpose room on now. Uh, the one in the gym was halfway working, not fully working, so we were having some issues with the mechanical motor there as well. All right. That's just to show you all the, all the dirt. He's finally down to the base level there. And that dirt that's there, that's being removed, um, off-site. And, uh, that's, that's an area that's, uh, got to be focused on. Before that area was covered, um, there was a little building there. That's actually, um, showing some, some water lines. Obviously, before winter, we need to get those covered so they don't freeze. So that's what that, that picture's all about. All right, next up, uh, let's talk a little bit about what's going on at PG. Garrett, can you zoom in on that a little bit? All right. So what you've got there, this is the mobile units that have been ordered. Uh, we, we expect those, um, in and ready so we can start those classrooms in second semester. Uh, what you're looking at are four classrooms. You come in an exterior door and you walk down a hallway, so, um, there, you know, the, there's the entryway into each of those classrooms is through the hallway, so it's a, it's a safety aspect. And then on the back end of it, Garrett, if you can scroll down just a little bit, pull it down. Yeah. Well, that's, no, that same photo. You're looking at the four classrooms, scroll. Pull the picture down. If it'll go, yes, sir. There you go. And on the back end of that, if you come out, if you come down that main center hallway, uh, you'll notice that there's a restroom facility there as well. Uh, so that, that's the, uh, what, what's been ordered and will be placed on the tennis courts at Pleasant Gardens Elementary School. And I know Ms. Ward and Ms. Rayfield will be happy when that happens, because it's getting a little crowded. And, um, we know, we know it'll be good to be able to get the library space, I think is what you guys were talking about, to be able to get the library space back again. All right, next slide. And this is just a, a side picture of it. It kind of shows how it all, all goes together. All right. All right. Now what Garrett's got here, um, is a server, and I don't know anything about this. Right, Garrett? But I, but I can tell you that, um, it's a big deal. So, over, over the, uh, over the holiday weekend, Garrett and his team spent a tremendous amount of time at the high school, uh, redoing this set of servers. And they've kind of been waiting for a while so they could get this updated. Really, what's going on there, and I'm, I'm really, I'm probably going to completely mess this up, Garrett, so if I do, just take over. But I know that, um, we're, we're able to receive a lot more bandwidth in our high school this year, um, because of some work that he's been doing. And then this, this system is going to actually help us to speed up even more, as well as, uh, filter heavier and, uh, just do, just do greater work with our technology needs altogether. But there are a lot of, as you can see, a lot of loose, loose wires there and loose ends. I know that folks at the high school will be glad when they get it fixed, but, uh, these guys worked, uh, the entire weekend, uh, making sure that they were, um, getting up and going. While that was going on, there was a fiber cut, uh, up towards North Cove, so we've sent a Starlink back up there, um, today. I mean, it just seems to be continuously that we're dealing with things like this. But this one's really important for our high school, and, um, just kind of wanted to show you some of the work that was going on there. And I know, Garrett, I'm sorry, but you want to say anything else about?
No, that's the other. Really, the high school was our largest network, and, um, over the last few years, we're almost in COVID. The amount of devices that we have now, we're having support upwards of, we've, we've gotten out of almost six thousand devices here. And that's laptops, desktops, phones, TVs, cameras, access points, everything. So, it's a much-needed upgrade, so we're glad to finally get this done.
Can I ask a quick question? Garrett, do we have a, do we have servers at every school? Does every school have its own server system?
So, all of our servers are at the data center on Good Street.
Uh-huh.
We have the, we have the bandwidth now, but we can keep them in a centralized location. So each of our schools just have mostly networking equipment. We do have, uh, we do have servers at some schools, but it's mostly for energy.
Got it. So the, the one that's really off-campus is the high school?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. That's great.
The largest.
The largest, for sure. Yeah. Well, that makes sense. This is great. This is good news, really, it is.
It's making my eyes go cross just looking at it. All right. And I'm also, uh, Garrett, I think, happy to report that we have, um, we had both of the TVs ready for the locker rooms. That was one of the last touches that we needed to do. Um, we, we, one of them was installed and the other one was opened up, and it was broken. So it's, it's on the way back, but the wires are there, everything's ready, so as soon as we get the TV, it'll be put up, so they'll have it for basketball season. But that's, that's really, uh, that's it for the facilities update. Primarily focused heavily on that, um, what's going on at Old Fort and PG.
Dr. Gritt, before you leave the podium, just for the public's information, is, is there any anticipated day that Old Fort Elementary will be available or able to accept students?
Sure. At this point, I think the, the cleanest thing to say would be in the fall, um, of, of next year. And I think that that, that's, that's realistic. There's still quite a bit of work to do there. Looking at the outside of the building, seeing the lights on, um, it, it looks like you could, you know, almost walk in there and just put some floors down and go back to school. You can tell, though, when you're inside the building, you can still, there's still a faint odor. I know Ms. Ward and I were in there, um, talking about, she was in there with a group of teachers on Friday, and they could still smell that. So really, when the heat comes on, that's really going to help eliminate that. That moisture content is still just too high.
And, uh, if I recall correctly, the gym floor is toast?
The, the gym floor is out, completely removed. Um, and that's one of the ones, it is a hardwood floor, so you have to bring it in and it has to climatize, um, before you can actually, uh, lay it. So, um, it, again, we've just got to have that moisture content right.
So it, from outside appearances, it looks like not a whole lot's happening, but a whole lot is really going on.
Correct. I mean, at this point, we've got, we, um, we're, we're working on those, those, uh, units to get them all up and running. And then once we, um, getting, getting, um, the internet there on, so those systems are all controlled through, through the internet. So that allows Garvin to fire them up and, and, and get that building up to where it needs to be.
Just one last question, maybe. Any other issues at other schools that...
Well, I mean, I mentioned...
The board needs to give attention to?
North Cove, uh, was, was obviously an area, uh, we were dealing with fiber cut, but that was outside of our area. The, the fencing at North Cove is another, uh, significant damage point, um, as well as just a tremendous amount of trees down there. Uh, there's the playground at Mary, and those are things, um, we, we, we have those listed as areas that we hope to, to see some improvements on, as well as a group of, uh, you know, the folks from the Carolina Panthers that were up at North Cove, and, um, they're going to be coming here in, in the coming weeks, uh, with, with cheerleaders and, and some folks, so we're excited about that. And one of the things that they wanted to do was, um, to, to pitch in, and, um, they had a few projects that they were asking about, so I'm not sure exactly what they'll end up doing for us, but just the fact that they were, um, east of, or west of I-77 was a big deal. Uh, so we're glad to have them and look forward to seeing, uh, those folks up at, uh, up at North Cove. As far as, um, this, this week, or last week, uh, we had one of the chillers that went, and it seems weird that you're talking about a chiller in November, but I think while we were up in DC, uh, there was a day here that was nearly eighty, eighty-one degrees, and it got a little warm in Eastfield. We had a chiller that went down in that building. So that's one of the, the, another area we're still working on. So HVAC still, um, it seems to be giving us issues. And it's something that, um, with those aging systems, as we've talked about with the board many, many times, it's going to be an area that we've just really got to focus, continue to focus on.
Well, and while you have the floor, and before you leave the podium, could you give the public an update on our school bus transportation routes or...
Yes, sir. All the school bus transportation routes are still published on the website. Um, we still have a number of community stops, and we will continue those community stops. But as the, as those, uh, decrease, uh, then what we're doing is we're doing individual call-outs with the principals, uh, so they can, uh, make those calls individually on, on the bus. We're trying to run those in the evening, so the bus driver have, have familiarity with the, with the route and any change, and that way the parents would know, um, a good estimate of time when the, when the child would be picked up in the morning. Uh, we are, um, seeing a, a decrease in some of those. Some are going to be a while. For the, on seventy, the Curtis Creek Bridge, uh, the estimate was two and a half months ago, or was two and a half months. That's been about two weeks, so at least two months, um, before we, uh, see a temporary bridge there. That will tr- give us, uh, a tremendous amount of support. I know, uh, Ms. Ward, with the, with the students that are coming from Old Fort, that's been, that's been an issue. They're having to get up really early to get on those buses. So that'll be, that'll be, uh, some, some relief for sure. Obviously, up two-twenty-one, uh, still having to use the workaround for, for some time there as well, so. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Can I take a minute just to say, in the facilities update, I, I, I want to especially just mention Ms. Rayfield and Ms. Ward, who were almost Ms. McIntyre, Ms. Allison. Like, that's why I had to stop, because suddenly I'm going back to everybody's maiden names for some reason. And, but also, um, to Mr. Spavy and to Ms. Bennett and to Ms. Elliott, because it hit me that we've been so concerned about the Old Fort kids that were displaced, obviously from the school, but then the kids from Old Fort that are at West and at Foothills and at the high school. And just the way that they've wrapped around these kids and these families. But I, I use the, um, analogy of the loaves and the fishes, because I don't know where y'all put all the kids at PG. I just know for the, I think, when I was there, the first seven days with, that y'all were there, and everybody seemed to have a spot. And that was incredible to take three hundred and fifty kids and put them in places, and within a couple of days, um, learning was just, it was just taking place. And I, I'm not sure that the public even grasp that, that in addition to just those kids, and again, at, at the, at the high school and the, and those two middle schools, I don't think they grasp what all your staffs had to do. In addition to that, you had some staff members that didn't even have homes themselves. And so I think it's just been incredible, um...
Really has.
...what y'all've done.
Yes, sir.
Could you, uh, give them that day on the bus service to Max with our activities?
Well, I'm not sure. The last time or two that I passed by their satellite parking lot, there weren't any cars there.
That's right. I think, I think that, um, we have, we finished with that, uh, just last week.
I, I, I did come around the back road, I guess it's been week, ten days ago, and they were paving the parking lot outside the plant there. And then just shortly after that, they did open a temporary bridge for employee traffic. So, uh, they're, they're coming along.
They're, they're actually ahead of schedule. November the thirteenth was the original date that they gave us, and, um, they stopped using it. Suzanne, what day was it last week? Fri- last Friday? Okay.
And then also, I saw Ms. Ward, I wanted to just put a, put a word out, that Old Fort has been so tremendously grateful for all of the donations, but Old Fort has asked on social media, and, and perhaps if we could get some help from that, that for, right now, we just kind of need to pause that a bit, because the, the donations have been so great and, and just been amazing, but, um, there's no more room to put things. So if, if we could kind of get the word out, thank you for that. August, definitely, they'll be back in, but, but for right now, just kind of pause on it.
Well, uh, extreme circumstances. Call for extreme measures.
They really do.
All right. Dr., any other questions as far as building grounds, facilities? All right. If not, then we, uh, glad to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Joey Hill from McDowell High School.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for the server, on behalf of the high school. I'll be putting that to good use as early as, uh, tomorrow. So, uh, I'd like to continue a, a theme from earlier, which is the celebration of the Blue Ribbon Award that went, that, uh, our Early College has earned. I thought that, uh, it might be nice to hear, rather from the teacher representative, from the teachers themselves, uh, the, the folks who make Early College special. So I had the great pleasure of traveling to the Early College, making the massive journey up the, uh, up the bypass, uh, twice this week to interview teachers at the Early College, and I have, uh, compiled a video with the help of, um, Mr. Menish at the high school, to share with you what they had to say. Now, here was the, the single question I asked them, what makes McDowell Early College... Now, here was the, the single question I asked them, what makes McDowell Early College a Blue Ribbon School? Now, this is being recorded. They went on for a long time. They really did. Mr. Menish and I were quite challenged, but we did manage to get this down to something like a reasonable, uh, length for a, for a video at a board meeting. We're going to hear first from two English teachers, they went on a really long time. As is our want. Uh, and then we'll hear from, uh, a very experienced teacher, one who was so experienced that she taught me when I was in tenth grade in Algebra II. A, a new teacher, and then also from last year's, uh, teacher representative to, to the board. And then we'll, we'll hear from this year's, um, uh, McDowell Early College Teacher of the Year, a man with whom you are already familiar, the great Dr. Kerr. Oh, very, I'll say that at the end.
I am Ashley Butler, and I mostly teach English, um, especially English I here at the Early College. Um, I'm also National Board Certified. Oh, and I've been here since two thousand twelve.
My name is Candace Cochran, and I am National Board Certified also. Um, I have been here since two thousand twelve. I teach English II, III, and IV, and sometimes seminar. Okay, Ashley, what do you think makes our school a Blue Ribbon School?
About you, what do you think?
Yeah.
Like, how do you think those cha- how do you think those changes that we've had since you and I've been here have contributed to not being a Blue Ribbon School?
Well, I think you spoke about the expectations. You know, when we, um, see the students in our classroom, they kind, here lately, I would say, the kids know of the expectations that, you know, being here requires. Um, I would say that, you know, that's a piece on the academic part. You know, that the kids are grading the classrooms if, you know, but it's not all about academics. I really believe a lot in the relationship piece. I think that the things that we do at Early College are different from other schools where we focus on relationships. We take trips, we have a homeroom called Family, which, um, every kid in my family, which I have twenty-two this year, will have me every year until they graduate. So when you start in ninth grade, you have Ms. Cochran, and when you graduate, you have Ms. Cochran. And so that relationship piece, um, makes the environment, you know, just a safe, you know, comfortable environment where kids are just excited to be here, um, you know.
And the older ones kinda help lead the younger ones and set up those expectations for them too. Like, when we lead, we expect that you step up and that you lead.
Yes. Yeah, our school is all about leading, um, student, you know, engagement is always about, you know, just them taking part, taking, you know, a role in leadership. Um, we have clubs, the, the, in the clubs, they lead. You know, we have people who, um-
Sponsor.
I'm Emma Elliott. I've been here six years. I was hired here as a math tutor and academic support at that time. I helped the math teachers and I worked one-on-one with the students that need extra help, uh, for all the math classes and the college classes also.
I'm, uh, Lindsay Parker. I did my student teaching here, um, and was hired on in the spring. And I've been working here for two years now, teaching English, and I also am the yearbook advisor.
Hey, I'm Mary Bassney. This is my eleventh, twelfth, twelfth year teaching, and this is my first year at McDowell Early College. I teach Math I. And one thing that I've noticed as I've been here this year is we create great relationships with our students. We have family on Fridays, and we keep that group of students all year, and we keep them every year until they graduate. So we're able to build great, meaningful relationships with them and work with them one-on-one on Fridays. We have club times to do the same thing and meet different people within our schools. So I think that in itself helps us and helps us become what we have been over the last several years, to become a Blue Ribbon School.
And adding to what Mary said about, uh, great relationships, we also have great relationships with parents. Like, last night we had the student-led conferences, and, uh, we go through their portfolios with the parents. And that helps a lot to, for the parents to know what's going on here.
I agree. Students are able to really take charge of their learning with those student-led conferences. They lead everything, they present to their parents, they show their strengths, their weaknesses. And, uh, the parents are very involved with their students. They're able to ask questions with them, and, uh, I think the students really enjoy it.
Yeah, and that adds on to the, on the personal relationship part two, where the parents come with their student to their family leader's classroom. So you're consistently seeing the same staff member for four, five years that your student's here. Um, and I think we can all agree that we all look forward to Fridays for sure. They're wonderful. They're the best day of the week.
You really get to know the students and, and individual clubs too. And just, uh, seeing what all they can, what they all get, can get accomplished during that time.
I'm Greg Kerr. I teach Biology here at McDowell Early College. Um, I'm in my third year here, and I found McDowell Early College to be a place where the principal, um, Ms. Robinson, has created, uh, an atmosphere where teachers build relationships with students, that the administration is supportive of faculty. You know, we do things that other schools don't to help our students succeed. And that includes, um, after-school required, um, uh, make-up sessions. We do, uh, the, uh, what do we call that?
Supportive grading.
Supportive grading. Thank you. There was that word, supportive grading. We do supportive grading. We do, um, kickoff each year going to the Summer Bridge Program, which really does help build relationships between faculty and students. We're no longer just someone spouting wisdom from the front of the classroom, but we're getting into students' lives. We, we have good relationships with our students. We know who they are. And the students have good relationships, um, with the faculty and the staff. The staff are really supportive in what we do here as well. I love the student-led conferences, where students present their portfolio to their parents here at the school twice a year. Gets the parents involved. All those things make this a successful school, and it's all because of the vision that our principals had. One of the other great things is the community service requirement that we have for our students. They've got to be involved in serving. Some, we're recording this right on Election Day, some are working polls today. Other students have gone and raked leaves for community, uh, members, or gone to other students' houses to work on, uh, projects that are needed because of cer- certain situations. All sorts of examples we can give of how our students have been connected to, um, the greater community.
Thank you. Dr. Kerr, I know there is nothing more fun than watching yourself on video in a room full of people, but, uh- Please, please, by all means. Um, I think, uh, if there were any words that we heard again and again and again in that, in that, uh, video, we heard the words relationship and family. Um, and I, uh, I would like to congratulate, uh, MUC on behalf of all of the educators, all the teachers particularly in McDowell County on your well-deserved award.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Item ten tonight is Correspondents', and Ms. Smith, does the board have any correspondence? No correspondence. Item eleven is a request to address the board or public comment. Are there any requests to address the board this evening? None of those either. Well, we'll continue along with item twelve, which is new business. And, uh, our Finance Officer, Ms. Rampy, is here to present to the board a, uh, certified and salaried staff local leave.
Good evening. This was in your packet, uh, but I did want to go over, what we are looking to do is, as we talked about before, there were a lot of staff members, administrative staff, certified staff, salary staff, that went above and beyond during the disaster recovery, working on weekends and after normal hours, uh, whether it be the warehouse or working at the EOC or different, uh, job duties. And so what we would suggest, if you would approve it, is for us to honor that by giving them local leave time that they could take, uh, in lieu of those, those days that they worked above and beyond their normal working hours. They would take those on non-student days, so it wouldn't disrupt, uh, instruction. Uh, but it would let them save their individual leave time and give them a reward for, for using up their weekend for during the disaster recovery. Behind the memo that you received that requests that is the use of, uh, the leave. It is very similar to, uh, what we've done when we had that, uh, for people with that during COVID, when we had some people working that during COVID when we were out. Uh, basically, you can use it in lieu of other leave. Uh, it cannot be used on a student day. As I said, it has no cash value. If you were to leave, it cannot be cashed out. Uh, it has to be approved by the supervisor, and it doesn't carry ever to a subsequent year. A lot of people would use that in lieu of, you know, a Christmas leave day or things like that to save leave.
All right. Any questions about, uh, the action that Ms. Rampy's requesting the board to take this evening?
I'll make a motion that we accept this request and, and we take action on it.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Frank, and a second by Mr. Schuford. Is there any discussion on the motion? And again, Ms. Rampy, to clarify, by granting these, uh, local leave days, it's, doesn't create an extra expense for the school district.
That's correct. It would just be in lieu of other leave, um, that would save their leave for when they went to retire.
Sure.
Uh, it would, it would have a benefit to the employee at that time.
Right. So it, it would have value to the employee, but not monetarily-
For us.
At this time?
Yes.
Okay. Just to clarify.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion then, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Minister of Defense, for recognizing our staff. Uh, Board Reports, Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Frank, anything from there?
No, sir.
All right. Building and Grounds, Mr. Suddles?
Uh, just a couple of things. As of today, we had nine colleges, uh, put pledges down to help replace, actually, we've got the, the whole total funds for the same style of playground that would be at West, uh, at, uh, Old Ford and at Marion Elementary. So once you find out the insurance, uh, what they're gonna cover, we wanna divide these funds and then put it to those two schools for their playground to expand, um, turf. The used turf was donated to the high school to cover the track. We got that there. Mr. Carson, I have not forgot about you. Your turf, donated turf will be picked up on Thursday from Myrtle Beach and will be there for you to use. Okay, that's it.
All right. Uh, Ms. Silver, Curriculum and Instruction. Okay, what about Head Start?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, take the opportunity once again to thank Dr. Doolaney and her team for letting me be a part of the Head Start Policy Council, um, for the last, I think, three years. I know Ms. Mumal had, had done an amazing job being on that policy council, and she let me take it over from her. So thank you. I thank you for what you do for the, the, um, early learners in our county. Just wanted to share a little bit of an update, um, with what they've been doing in addition to all the other schools with, uh, Helene Relief. Um, on October the fifteenth, the North Carolina Head Start Association and Kaplan delivered car seats to be distributed and shared among other Western North Carolina Head Start programs that were affected by the storm. There was, um, Food Truck, Smoking Hot Grill, which is a veteran-owned and operated business, cooking hot dogs and grilled cheese for the families while they were able to go into a resource room to get clothing, food, water, diapers, wipes, hudging projects, and other items graciously donated from Nebo First Baptist Church and the, um, North Carolina Head Start Association. And just, uh, to reiterate the fact that through their team, they had three families that lost their homes during the storm. But Dr. Doolaney and her team have been in constant communication with them, and, and we're told today that all three of them have secured housing, um, and are hopefully being able to get back on their feet. But that couldn't have been done without their amazing staff continuing to just, uh, touch base with them. And also the monetary donations from, um, donors that they were able to get gift cards from, for those people to just buy gas and groceries and, um, the rest of those things. So, and again, the, the list is just way too much to share, the amount of outside agencies, churches, um, community organizations, uh, businesses that provided, um, resources for them. And it's one thing that I thought when, when Will Keller was speaking, and I wish I'd said it then, but I didn't, that my pastor Jerry, um, shared as he was much in contact with Dr. Grit and Will Keller at the EOC, is just how nice it was to have about a month in this county where there were no turf wars. That everybody was jumping in to help everybody. And, and it's a shame that we had to have a natural disaster to have that happen, but it sure was nice to see the amount of people that just continued to showed up, to showed up. Oh, sorry about that. To show up, um, for our kids and for our families, because in the end, that's who, who matters the most.
Okay. Uh, Policy Committee, Ms. Pupo? No update from there. Item thirteen is approval of the Consent Agenda, and you have those items listed in your, in your packet there. Uh, we know that any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda for consideration on its own merits. And so is there a motion concerning the Consent Agenda?
Uh, maybe I'm not knowing, remembering the order, but I, I would like to have a discussion again about the travel basketball.
Okay. All right. Is, uh, any other? Okay. So is there a motion then to approve the Consent Agenda, uh, not including the, uh, facility usage request? Ms. Pupo makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Helms makes the second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say to the principals that your school improvement plans look amazing. Um, thank you for the amount of work that you put into that. Once again, the community has no idea how much work y'all do behind the scenes, but it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you for that.
Okay. All right. If not, all in favor of the motion to approve, with the exception of the facility usage request, and the motion carries. So now, uh, Dr. Grit, I believe at our last board meeting, we tabled action on this particular facility usage request until you could get some more information for the board. Would you, do you have-
Yes, sir.
Something to report?
I do, and you guys should have this in your packet as well, um, the, the information, uh, that we, we gathered. Um, so the request was made by an individual seeking to use a gymnasium for travel ball practice. That was the one we were looking at. Uh, according to McDowell High School, and then just doing some research there, travel ball teams typically are not charged a fee to practice as long as they're coordinating a schedule with the athletic department with the school activities taking priority. Um, it, we did, we had a discussion here just to confirm that. We looked back through several of our, um, uh, requests. Uh, the one thing that we did note is in March twenty-twenty-three, uh, the individual who was seeking, uh, this gym, uh, was doing some private lessons. And when the private lessons, um, were being done at the school, then he did indeed pay. Uh, since then, he's doing the private lessons, from my understanding, elsewhere, um, but continuing to do the travel ball, uh, component of this, um, at, at our school. Um, and, and with talking with, uh, the folks there, they, they really didn't ha- have any issue with it.
Uh, any further discussion on the matter?
Well, uh, just for the record, I, I, I'm not sure that I have ever felt that the appropriateness of, of this, because it is a for-profit, uh, organization. Um, there are ten students that are impacted by this. It's over seventy-two hours of usage of heat and lights in our, in our buildings and our facility. I just don't know that giving that amount of time to a for-profit organization is appropriate for the school system in that situation. But, so, that's just my personal opinion on that.
Anything else?
I, I called the, um, commissioners, a couple commissioners, to ask- I called the commissioners, a couple commissioners, to ask why we do not keep the Recreation Department open past 5:00, when Avery County opens their doors until 8:30 at night. For a kid to go in at 5:00 right after school and by the time school's out and he gets there, there's very little time for him to do what he wants to do practice-wise or anything else. I think if you could maybe have a conversation with them, I did call David Walker and those guys, and he said he'd call me back, and I did not get a return call. I would like to see us work something with the Recreation Department to where they could use that up there as well, and I'm not saying we don't let them use it. I just would like to open up as many doors for kids as possible, so they don't have to just pay or to go with this individual to practice. If they want to practice, they could actually go to the Rec Department, because I didn't have the funding or stuff to do what I needed to growing up. So having a free opportunity or other options, where it's just not chosen kids, 10 chosen kids, I would like to see us do that. But I'm not against, you know, letting the kids use what we need to do.
Anyone else?
Real quick question. Doctor, I assume something on the Consent Agenda, has your recommendation?
Yes, sir. I mean, correct. In this situation, I'm following suit on what we've done in the past with this individual and really just brought it back to the board to clarify the couple of things. And one, when it was for an individual, when he was doing things for profit, in that situation, he did pay. And since then, he, when he's doing things for profit, he's using other facilities, is what I've been told.
Are you saying that this travel ball team is not a pay to play?
That was my understanding in that situation. They're paying for their fees to play, but their private lessons was something he was doing off-site. It wasn't something individually that was being done on-site. Two separate things.
So to be a part of, I guess, do we know to be a part of this travel ball team, is there a fee to be a part of the travel ball team?
I'm sure there's a fee that's associated with them playing the games in other places, but that's what was brought up. He's, in other words, on this situation, he wasn't supposed to be making money, from my understanding.
Donnie, can you bring some clarity to how that works?
I think one of my second cousins or whatever is playing for this team, and he is paying to play.
But it's not for the privilege of playing.
It's not, correct, correct. Now, the only problem I have with it, we're not opening up to every kid, because this is a chosen kid to play, and if you can pay, you are playing. Like I said, I don't never want to go against having a kid an opportunity to play and practice, but if you are paying to play, to me, my personal opinion, just me, my personal opinion, you should pay something for the lights and stuff, and you should not be collecting that for just your team, especially when the fees, I think, are over $1,500 per kid to play. So you need to find out what the fees are. If it's a low fee, 200 bucks, that's uniforms and the things you need. If it's $1,500, something else is being compensated there, whether it's time or what.
Well, I'm certainly not an expert on it, but my understanding is that the fees for the travel ball teams are for the tournaments that these teams participate in.
Most of the time.
That's the largest part of the expense.
And if that's the case, then, you know, I'm fine.
Yeah, that was my understanding of it.
Anything else? Anyone else? Is there a motion regarding the facility usage request? We can have a motion to approve, we can have a motion to disapprove, we can have a motion to table.
I'll make the motion, and we go ahead and approve it.
Okay. Mr. Suddles makes the motion. Mr. Schuford makes the second. Any further discussion, question need cleared up?
I think the only thing I would say, and it really has nothing to do with the fees or the not fees, because, you know, my kids both play travel ball, and it's not just a basketball team that's pay to play. If you play travel ball, you pay to play regardless of what sport it is. I think that I would like to commend Raquan for going through our schools, going on, having a very successful college career, and coming back and doing exactly what we ask him to do, and that's reinvesting in his community. I don't know anything about the financial aspect of it at all, but I think that, and I think that my colleagues out there in the classrooms would say we encourage our kids to come back and give to the communities that raised them, not, again, not getting into his financial business, because it's not my business to get into. But I think for myself, I don't think that we should just hold him to a different standard, when if you go by any ball field in the summer, you're going to see a baseball or softball travel ball team using our fields.
And I will say that in the past, especially when we started Little League back up in the county, East McDowell was huge in providing an extra place to play, and we had so many kids to practice, excuse me, and they did not charge the Little League, even though the kids at Little League had to pay, you know, fees for jerseys and umpires and stuff like that. So I agree. I think we, as a county, should support every athletic opportunity.
All right. Well, if it's legit that he's, you know, not running a racket off of the school system, then, you know, I agree. It is good to, it is good for us to be investing in our kids, and I, too. I've seen Raquan and his program and what he's doing. I mean, honestly, it's great. Just want to make sure, as you talk about, Donnie, is that this is equitable, that we're doing this across the board then, that all these travel teams have access to our fields if they need it, or our gyms, or, you know, in order to do this. So that way, what you're doing is setting a precedence of equity throughout this system as far as, you know, making it available for all kids to have an opportunity.
Just one point of information for the general public. According to the board's local policy, school, building, principals, administrators have the discretion to grant or not to grant a facility usage request, with the exception of McDowell High School Gymnasium and the new turf field we have. Okay, just a point of order. So we have a motion to approve the facility usage request by Mr. Suddles and a second by Mr. Schuford. Nothing further than all in favor of the motion, and the motion carries. Thank you for the discussion. Really shed a lot of light. Okay. At this time, item 14 is a request for closed session, and we need a motion to move into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 for the following purposes. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information, and under subsection A3, to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege, and under subsection A5, to discuss the acquisition of real property. Is there a motion to move into closed session for those reasons? Mr. Schuford makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Mumal makes the second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, and the motion carries, and the board moves into closed session at 7:00.